Right, now it follows that I have the honour of asking to confirm the point of councillor Stephen Mullin's vice chair of the committee for the 2018/19 council year. Is that agreed? We've got quite a heavy agenda tonight, so let's crack on. The minutes of the last meeting have been held on 23rd of June and have laid on the table 30 minutes before the meeting. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Apologies for absences and substitutes. Amy, have there any apologies been received?
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Holder's advised that he's running slightly late today.
Okay. Right, declarations of interest. Amy, have there any declarations of interest that have been received before the meeting and whether members of any interests have declared?
None received before the meeting, chairman.
This is good. Any questions received from members of the public, Amy?
Thank you, chairman, none received.
And any questions from members?
None received again, chairman.
Okay, right, right. Before we start, I think it might be a good idea if we just went round the table introducing people who were there.
I'm councillor Jim Edwards, portfolio holder for Economic Development and Community Development.
Hi, I'm George Warley from Atkins. I'm the project director for this, for the economic development strategy for Waverley.
I'm Leanne Kelly, I'm an economist at Atkins, consultant lead on the economic development strategy.
And I'm Kelvin Mills, I'm the head of communities and major projects at Waverley, of which economic development is part of my service.
Thank you very much. Well, yes, I was familiar. Mrs, would you like to introduce us?
Certainly, thank you, chairman. Graham Clark, strategic director for Waverley.
Annie Wrighton, strategic director, Waverley.
Emily Watson, strategic HR analyst.
Katie Meakin, HR manager.
Robin Taylor, head of policy and governance.
Louise Norrie, corporate policy manager and ONS officer.
Thank you. I think I also had to add, the health warning, this is not, this is a public meeting, but not a meeting in public, you know, and that we would expect everybody to show better respect and not. First item of any means of significance is, of course, the economic strategy, and I would like to invite, I think we've got another presentation, but I'd like to invite councillor Edwards to introduce us, please.
Thank you, chairman, and welcome, members. Thanks for giving us time today. You've already been introduced to, self-introduced by Atkins consultants, who will be giving a presentation, and questions will be after the presentation's finished, not during. So if you make a note of any questions or items you want to discuss, can you please do it at the end? Okay. Now, the timetable of the strategy, we've had a workshop, including feedbacks from towns and parishes, we've had the economic tour on the 22nd of August, which I thought was very worthwhile, and you've had the updated draft strategy on the 7th of September, and we're presenting to you tonight. There will be some final adjustments to do, if anything that really highlights an issue, we'll try and get that done today or tomorrow. By the end of tomorrow, we will have all the comments to Atkins consultants, so that they can finalise the policy. It goes to executive briefing on the 25th of September, and to the executive on the 9th of October. Okay, that's the timetable. As you know, we were going to do it in July, but there were a number of issues, particularly from one of the town councils, which didn't fit in with their committee's cycle. So, anyway, that's where we are. I'm now going to hand over to George and Leanne, who will show you the draft strategy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. So, yeah, the structure of the presentation will be, we'll try and keep it strictly to 20 minutes. Firstly, we'll give you an overview of the strategy, then go on and talk a bit about the evidence behind it, to underpin it, spend a bit of time talking about all the consultation we've done, and how that's fed into, to shape the strategy, and then to finalize on a few other points and next steps, et cetera. So, just to give you a little, some of you may know a bit about this already, but in terms of the sort of context, the findings was that Waverley would really benefit from an economic strategy, and so that really kicked off the process. And the idea was to have a strategy that was smart, in terms of creating measurable actions that can be measured and monitored, and then that can filter back, and the strategy can be an updatable, flexible piece of work, that adapts to local conditions. And the process to develop the strategy, we principally developed it, but with consultation with, and coordination with the council, with the officers, and critically with key partners, you know, bottom-up, sort of marrying up of top-down and bottom-up to create a balanced approach, and an evidence-based approach, feeding in socio-economic data. Leanne will probably talk a bit more about all the consultation that's fed into this. And the key outcomes, we hope, are an overarching vision, an economic vision for Waverley, to take it forward to 2032, and six supporting themes with activities, tangible activities that we can follow, that will help to boost the economy and make the economy of Waverley sustainable. So, an overview of the strategy, it's got two main parts. There's a long-term strategy document that runs from 2018 to 32, and that can be seen as a sort of framework, setting out the principles. But then critically, there's a, the second part is an action plan, and that's the thing that will be monitored regularly, that will be monitored, well, we're going to talk, but I think it's, the idea is to at least monitor it every 12 months on an ongoing basis, and potentially six months in the initial period. And the key aims are to, you know, these sorts of strategies, we do them all over the country, and the key benefit is that it creates that dialogue between councillors, the key stakeholders, all the key people with interest in, you know, creating a sustainable economy, and that this is a starting point, it's a sort of, a point to sort of marshal those views. We can identify local challenges and opportunities, create these actions, and importantly, we're going to consider, you know, Waverley's environment and character, make sure it's not just a generic study, but it's a little strategy, it really adapts to local circumstances. So, the key vision, the overarching vision, is to create a great place for local businesses to grow and flourish, where our communities have access to local employment, and where everyone shares in the economic prosperity. And to try and achieve that vision, we've set out six, six key themes. The first one you'll see is to support sustainable business and economic growth, secondly, to provide high-quality business and economic support, thirdly, to support healthy towns and village centres, fourth, to encourage a successful visitor economy that's right for Waverley, because that's a key element, a fifth element is to develop links with and support the education sector, which is important in Waverley, and then six, the sixth point is to support the right housing develops, development in the right area, to support the local community and economy. So at that point, I'll hand over to Leanne to give a bit more detail about the evidence and the overarching strategy.
Excellent, thanks. So I think the key point here is that we've used a whole range of data publications, from ONS, from NOMIS, as well as purchase data from Experian, and we've used the ID Interdepartmental Business Register as well, so we've really tried to bring forth the most up-to-date data, of course, a whole range of dimensions, for businesses, employment, and local residents. So what we wanted to do is just sort of show a bit of a snapshot of some of the evidence here, and what we have produced alongside the economic development strategy is an evidence-based appendix, which is quite a chunky piece, and it covers a whole range of dimensions, and presents that data, and importantly, was one of the key feedbacks, we then ensure evidence flows back through to the themes and to the action plan measures, to make that link from the evidence base back through to the strategy. So we have a few slides here, I just want to show some of the business, employment, and sector headlines. Don't necessarily have to go through each of those, but I think what came out very strongly for Waverley is that it does have a very strong competitive environment, there's a whole range of ranking systems, and Waverley always comes up reasonably high on the business and competitive environments indexes, and we've shown some of the comparison areas. Waverley has a large business space, as you're aware of, a lot of those are very small businesses, that's very much that dynamic nature of Waverley's businesses, a higher number of home workers, and a lot of people in Waverley are self-employed. So this is an example of some of the data we've brought in to enrich the strategy and ensure it's evidence-based. In talking about employment, I think some of the key headlines, for long, Waverley has performed strongly in terms of economic activity rates, low unemployment, that are in line with Surrey. What we've shown here, one of the key findings was the difference between workplace wages in Waverley compared to residential wages, and how that may have an impact around housing and supporting local businesses. And we can see, you know, there's obviously a large number commutes in and out of Waverley, to different areas, and the rest of Surrey was the most significant area for our commuters. So again, an area of the evidence-based employment, that's reflected in chapter one of the strategy, as well as the detailed evidence base. A key part of this development of the strategy as well was looking at Waverley's key sectors, and how the business support and employment measures, the strategy aims as a framework to facilitate that going forward sustainably, whilst we understand the crux of Waverley's key sectors. Again, just a bit of a snapshot here, the rural businesses account for 32% of the total business base, that's a significant share, and we've tried to ensure that's reflected throughout the strategy and the action plan measures. We've picked up some key sectors there again, around education, the creative sector, the care sector, the visitor economy, and as well, the local services, with a whole range of self-employed and small businesses that service the local residents, and the importance of those to local economy. Talking about Waverley as a place, the UK Prosperity Index names Waverley as the number one place to live, and we're aware of that quality of the environment, and living in Waverley is, you know, performs high across a whole range of dimensions for place. Picking up some other areas here, so we know that Waverley has, you know, has higher house prices amongst, the highest in Surrey, housing affordability's been raised an issue from some businesses. We can also, we've also looked at population projections going forward, and seeing the working age population is quite flat, and then potentially declines further ahead, so that helps to give a bit of a context to the timeline of the strategy to 2032, in terms of ensuring that Waverley can maintain the strong living environment that it is, and the sustainable economy as well. So, the next section, we'll just talk through some of the key themes that came through the feedback, and how the strategy is now responding to those, and making sure they are incorporated throughout the framework of the strategy, and the supporting document, the action plan. So I think it's important firstly to recognise that feedback has come from a range of stakeholders, as have been listed above, and through this process of review, it's enabled the strategy to become stronger documents, to be more representative across Waverley's different areas, so that's been a very important process. To give a bit of a proxy for the level of consultation that's been undergone, we've received 180 separate comments on the documents, and of course, some of those repeat and align, there'd be areas as well where perhaps there's a bit of conflict that can be, that to be worked through and balanced in the strategy. I think one of the key findings was that the six themes were well-supported across the stakeholders, so that was really strong to see, that the six themes were received. And as mentioned earlier, there's been various feedback points from the draft strategy, there's been a presentation and workshop of key evidence and the themes, there's been an economic tour, and there's been a draft of the action plan, which a range of stakeholders and councillors have responded to, so that's been good to see, and this is where we've got to this point now, with a good level of review and feedback. So I wanted to show here, some of those key review themes, across those 180 comments, what came out really strongly was those presented above, so put in Waverley context the wider area, ensuring the rural economy is reflected, the key sectors of education and care were raised, as needing to be included, and how can the strategy help support those going forward. Brexit was mentioned, to make sure that is now incorporated, given the timeline since the strategy was first developed. Infrastructure was another key theme, to ensure this strategy aligns with the local plan that's been adopted now, the infrastructure delivery plan, and the corporate strategy. And really key points there as well around delivery was that the strategy should be longer term, and ensure that the actions are achievable, so a really strong set of review themes that came through. So what we wanted to demonstrate is that these have been taken on board with the update from the strategy. First and foremost, I think it's really important to note that the now, the economic strategy is through to 32, as was a key feedback recommendation, and to understand that the strategy is an overarching document that helps to facilitate an ongoing process of dialogue, and updating of an action plan that suits the current economic environment, and responses from the local stakeholders and the wider partnerships that are a key part of this. And as was mentioned before, of course, it's going to be supported with an action plan that looks at the achievable actions over the shorter term, that can be measured, monitored, and have a key action owner attached to them, and this is something that could be updated as needed, and reported on annually, to ensure the action plan is helping to meet that long-term vision for the economic development strategy. So just, yeah, various comments came back around the evidence base, so that has gone through a refresh, ensuring the latest data is incorporated, and to ensure that's linked back through the documents. Rural economy, as was mentioned, was a key item for review, and a whole range of comments are received, and we have gone through those, and trying to ensure that within each of the themes, the six themes of the strategy, the rural economy is represented, as of course, approaches will need to be tailored to different areas of Waverley. And we have, we have an example there, conscious of time, but, yeah, have an example of trying to bring the richness into the evidence base across the different areas of Waverley. As mentioned earlier, the key sectors, we've tried to ensure they've been brought out with key evidence and case studies to explain why these sectors are very key for Waverley now and going forward, and section two of the strategy picks up each of those sectors, details those, and they follow through to the economic development themes, and again, are there very strongly in the action plan. Brexit, of course, that was raised, we can say that's been recognised, and we have put in some evidence to the evidence base regarding Brexit, and where Waverley may be more or less impacted compared to other parts of the country. And I think what's key to note is because of the live document and continually updated document of the action plan, it's going to enable, where there's more certainty around Brexit, and when there's been more engagement with local business and the wider partnerships, that can be reflected as key, you know, business advice and support. Finally, on infrastructure, I think it's important to note that the economic development strategy sits alongside other Waverley strategies, so the local plan, which has been adopted recently, the infrastructure delivery plan, and the corporate strategy, and I think that what the economic development strategy enables is it provides further evidence for the key principles for infrastructure development in Waverley, and how to make sure that supports any further housing and land development that happens, so I think this helps provide a further evidence base for those arguments, both locally and wider. So that's the sort of roundup there of the review, so thanks for bearing with us and listening to some of the evidence and key review responses, I think we'll pass back over to George.
Yeah, didn't want to say much more, just in terms of, you know, just to re-emphasise again that this, you know, the action plan is critical to this, and it will be a live document, you know, this is hopefully the starting point of this continuous dialogue between all the stakeholders, including yourselves, and the business community, and the key thing is to make these sort of actions smart, and measurable, and really focused, and hopefully it just won't sit on the shelf, so and this is going to be a live, you know, evolving strategy. And that's just an example of some of the key stakeholders that have fed in already, and will hopefully continue to. I think that's...
So I think the key thing is, taking on board all the comments from the further consultation, obviously the purpose of today's presentation and information is to take on board any further comments from yourselves, and we're keen to get that feedback, so that we can then feed it in to make the final adjustments this week to take forward through to executive. So we're aiming for the executive briefing on the 25th, the executive on the 9th of October. So really now, we'd like to open up if there's any questions or comments, again, we can take them away afterwards and after this meeting, but if we can answer any now, then we can do so.
Thank you very much. Yes, it's been very interesting, but you had 20 minutes as well, congratulations. Yeah, we have, before question and debate, we have councillor John Gray, who is ready to speak on this item. Would you like to take your four minutes now, councillor Gray?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, let me sort of compliment everybody on the good work, but nothing I'm going to say afterwards is intended to be critical of that work. What I want to really bring up is the weakness of the six themes as they address the rural economy. I know that you've taken on board some of the comments that have been made, the rural economy is really what makes and shapes our countryside, and I'm talking here about farming, equestrian, horticultural, gardens, parks, leisure areas, forestry and wood trades, and going with that are all the ancillary areas of agricultural engineers, vets, scientists, transport, construction, leisure, education, infrastructure support that goes with that. That is part of the rural economy that shapes our countryside, rather than, in fact, the rural businesses, 32% of the businesses are based in rural areas. What is a rural area, and what makes it attractive to these businesses? I have views, I'm sure other people have, but is it right that these are placed in areas often with poor infrastructure? Can we make more attractive areas affordable and sustainable as alternatives for some of these businesses? I think they go there because some of the premises are cheap, I think it's a good environment for them to work in, because they're not in the centre of places, so it encourages employees. But I think we should think as to why we've got so many businesses in there, and should we be producing sort of the equivalent in terms of business park, a rural business park in areas? Have we understood the classifications on page 52 and 53? Just to prove that I've read the document, do we really believe there are only 85 people in Waverley engaging in agriculture? 85 people? And that's out of 150 businesses? So there are 65 businesses that don't employ any people, don't have any people. I think the statistics, I understand the difficulty in terms of working with it, but especially when you're looking at those rural economies I talked about, they get classified in other areas. Your agricultural areas, and in the rural areas, you have quite a lot of people employed in agricultural engineering, repairing tractors and the like, but they get classified as something else. And in certain parts of Waverley, it's important we understand the impact of the rural economy versus the businesses in the rural area. Just to give you an example, in Dunsfold, small rural area, I talk about the one there, I'm sure my colleagues will forgive me for raising it, but it came about because of the neighbourhood plan. What we were trying to understand is how many farms did we have, how many equestrian facilities? We actually worked out that one in 10 people worked in the rural economy, they worked on the land and associated with that, it was a high percentage. We should protect the true rural businesses, because for no other reason than they shape our countryside. That countryside is what makes Waverley good, it's what effectively we're going to attract people into, and we should have policies that actually protect those businesses. That's my concern, not that there's anything wrong with your strategy, I don't know how you do it, I'm not going to give you the answers, but I ask you to have a look at it.
Thank you very much, thank you for those well-made points. I'll just, I think we've come a long way from the original draft, where we were in the first place, actually, and I must say, thank you to all the efforts of the working group, two of whom are not here, councillor Wheatley and councillor Townsend, who both made significant contributions to the working, and the tour of the County of the Borough. So I think we've come a long way, and it's now much more, to use the word sharper document. But anyway, I don't want you to debate. Councillor Band?
Thank you, chairman, and I agree with your comments about the way this has progressed, but I again want to pick up the comments made by councillor Gray. I mean, I think, from my feeling, it is still too urban-centric. The rural economy, as councillor Gray has very eloquently pointed out, you know, dominates Waverley as a borough, and we aren't even now taking up the opportunities that exist for the rural economy, and our strategy, I feel very strongly, needs to get engaged with it. I mean, for example, in this document, there is only passing reference to the Surrey Hills area of outstanding natural beauty. No reference to the board, no reference to any of the families of the Surrey Hills A&amp;O/B family, and the work that they're doing, no reference to the existing Surrey Hills A&amp;O/B management plan, a document which is already adopted by this council, and that document, the existing management plan, is a 2013/2018 document, and is currently, in terms of the Surrey Hills organisation, going to be updated with officer support from all the associated boroughs and districts involved over the next six months. It does seem to me we should be actually quoting that document, and seeking as part of our strategy to engage with the Surrey Hills group of companies, and what they are doing, and see how we can exploit that. And certainly, as referenced documents, I think they should be there, because it is work which, you know, in part, we as a borough are already paying for, and if we're not making use of it, then I think we are, you know, not getting value out of that subscription which we make. So, you know, I don't want to go into the detail, but I do feel very strongly that we need to engage with other people who are working in this area, and need to take advantage and build on what they're already doing. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Seaborn?
Thank you, chairman. Can I start just by saying that this debate is somewhat challenged by the fact that the documentation was only emailed out on Friday, and paper copies arrived for some of us, but clearly not everybody here, on Saturday. So I'm going to be quite honest, I have not read, I've not given it the detailed read that the document deserves, I've done what I can in the time, but I think that needs to start this whole discussion. We're not in a position, most of us are not in a position yet, to give in-depth comments. However, there are two aspects to this, there's the strategy itself, and there's the documentation. So, I think I'm pretty much there with the strategy, I'm fairly close to saying that what this material sets out to achieve is something that I think I could, when I've finished reading it all, will probably be able to support. That is provisoed, once I've read it through, I might change my mind, but, you know, there's an executive summary now, which tells us what it's all about, and that executive summary seems to contain something that is worthwhile, in my view, for the council to pursue. I'm a bit concerned about the vision, and it's okay as far as it goes, I'm totally behind all the words that are in it, but it misses out on the fact that Waverley runs on the basis of a goodly number of very well-educated people earning large salaries outside the borough, and spending the money on services provided in the borough, and that's not captured in the vision. And I don't think that's going to change overnight, okay? The vision's very much about businesses that are already here, with no, not addressing who they're servicing, and, you know, supporting people who live in the borough and work in the borough, but that actually is not the driver, the main driver for the economy in the borough. It's, you know, the driver seems to be providing services to people who earn their money, for the most part, outside of the borough. So I, you know, I'd appreciate it if the vision was looked at and added to. Nothing wrong with what's there, but I just don't think it's complete, in my view. Okay, so that's the strategy itself. In terms of the documentation, well, it'd be nice to have a look at it once it's been properly proofread, because, to me, if we can get the executive summary right, then that's a goodly part of the work, and it needs quite a bit of tidying up, just typos, the use of the term Waverley, sometimes it refers to the council, sometimes it refers to the place, these are very simple things. But what is missing from that executive summary is that... But what is missing from that executive summary is that summary of the Waverley economy. There's no mention of the total value, the whatever it was, four point seven billion, that headline figure. You know, if you're managing an economy, you want to know what it's worth and what were the, what were the key sectors? You've done all that work now, it's all in the, you know, the gist of the work, but it's not in the headline summary, which is for many people going to be all they read. So I think a paragraph there, really bringing out the headlines, talking to this in-out economy where, you know, a lot of the money's earned outside the borough and spent inside the borough, and a lot of the people that work in the borough come from outside the borough, those headlines. So I'd like to see that. The other point I'd got was that there's a lot in this, and there's an awful lot for Catherine's team to do. And nowhere in the strategy does it actually address how Waverley council, the entity, is going to achieve everything in here. So I think, you know, a brief, a paragraph or two about what our current staffing levels are to support economic development and whether they need to be addressed, you know, both in terms of numbers and skills, because I think, you know, there's a huge amount of work generated by this, and it'd be great if we can do it all. But the strategy doesn't actually talk to any, giving anyone any level of confidence that the organisation is there to support it. It might be, it just needs analysing. Right, with that, those are my comments. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Yeah, go on councillor. Councillor Ryan wants to speak as well, I don't think.
Thank you, Chair. My comments might be worth waiting a bit, Jim, not that I've got anything of value to say, but it probably echoes a lot of what councillor Seaborn has just said. First, I confess to to not having received the document, so I have not read it on paper. I did studiously watch the presentation, thank you, and congratulations for a lot of effort that's got into stuff that produces a lot of text and diagrams, it is all interesting. But as I said before, I think it doesn't portray the overall picture, the wider context. I moved here because I worked in the city. Thousands do. The trains leave Hasmer, the preeminent commuting town in the South East, if not the world, full, and not many get off at Guildford. They're all wage slaves in the city, and some of them extremely highly paid. The vice-chairman, the Swiss bank that owns the bank I used to work for, lives in Hasmer. He's probably earning a hundred times any of his neighbours. This is the wealth, this is a wealthy area, and the businesses in Waverley are therefore, as Richard eloquently explained, are substantially service industries. You could probably say, if all the manufacturing, if there is any, or similar industries vanished overnight, it wouldn't make much difference, because the vast, in my opinion, experience and a bit of guessing, probably most of the assets, the wealth in this borough comes from people working outside. As you say, only thirty-seven per cent work in the borough, and ninety-one per cent of the businesses are small, if not cottage industries. They are there to be supported, sure, I'll come on to that in a moment, but I would wish, and do tell me if it's all in the new version that I haven't seen yet, that there should be some top-down summary that says, for instance, X billion is the economy of Waverley, and eighty per cent of that comes from the city. If you work in a shop in Hasmer or farther, you probably have little appreciation of the size, the strength and the global influence of our city. I don't want to extol it totally, because after I left it, I realised it has more than its fair share of spivvy operations as well. But it is a tremendous driver in the British economy. It'll probably suffer from Brexit, and although you kindly include Brexit as a factor, there's absolutely nothing we can do here about Brexit. Whether it happens or not, and I suppose there's a chance it might not, things will change. And if the past is anything to go by, the city will probably survive, because they're pretty clever guys. So that's my first bleat. I should also say that it's great to produce these reports, they take a lot of effort, they look good. It's very easy for people like me to throw cabbages, I'm sorry about that. It's always easy to be negative, isn't it? I don't want to be. Now, as far as the local economic activity is concerned, clearly there's retail, clearly there are cottage industries, there are service industries. I just like to make a couple of comments. I would like to see some figures that show what the numbers of people are who work in care homes and have to live in the New Forest because they can't afford to live here, or similar. A lot of those people coming into Waverley probably are very lowly paid and can't afford to live here. We do need more social housing. And the other thing is, and I've had comments from businesses that are sizable and do things, is the dearth of space to occupy for businesses. We sweat a lot to find space, key sites for housing. We do, in the local plan and enabled plans, but business space, there's not much attention on that. And unfortunately, frequently we supply housing space by sacrificing the business space. I can think of rural industry parks in Hasmer that have gone to be replaced by expensive housing, probably lived in by stockbrokers. It's very difficult to do this. We don't live in a Stalinist command economy. Sometimes the government may behave as we do, but the planning isn't done like that. Maybe it's a pity, it's a big area one shouldn't stray into, but it's very difficult to, just in the same way, it's difficult to establish what the housing needs are, because people can move to Waverley from anywhere. You have to look at the country or the South East as a whole to understand it all. But as far as the economic situation is concerned, I would hope we could have an analysis from the top down, more business space, and I didn't see these points highlighted in your presentation. I would have hoped they would have been. And lastly, I only heard of this today on the radio, the burden of local taxation or business rates. We can't do much about that. Who can? Central government. Are we telling them? If every council bleats, maybe they'll listen. It does seem to be a burden. You pay business rates, and then if you're a business, you're taxed on the turnover, fine, but it's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Hess, although you're not ready to speak, I believe it's my discretion whether you can speak, and I think we'll allow you to.
You're too kind, Mr Chairman, thank you very much. I've worked with Atkins in other programmes, so I'm familiar with the sorts of products that I get from Atkins. This doesn't look like anything I've ever had from Atkins before, and I do have significant concerns. First of all, you, as a programme manager, you started to talk about smart objectives right at the start. If we look at the vision, I didn't see anything specific, measurable, actionable, realistic or time-bound in there. Is there a reason why we don't have a specific targeted vision of the order of we wish to be the best borough council for, name your criteria, or we wish to be in the top third performing, but something, you know, I'd like a vision that I can see, as opposed to this, which I've no idea how you measure a great place, or grow, flourish, these are nice words, but I cannot bound those or see anything with clarity. Going on from the vision, and I've only just skim-read this document, so again, I'm not well-read in, and if I have missed something, then I crave your indulgence, and I would ask you to come back and tell me what I've missed. But I would like to see objectives that flow directly from the vision, so I can see in your lines of operation or your six lines of development, what the objective, the specific, measurable, actionable, realistic and timely, your smart criteria are for those objectives, so we can start collectively, get our heads around what you're advising us to do, how you're advising us to do it, and how, when we've achieved it, we'll know we've achieved it, because we can measure it. I'd also like to see a financial and spend profile, so we can sort of tap the investment in the plan and the reward that we get from the plan, so we can actually start to, again, apply some financial metrics to how the plan's proceeding and how it's performing against And also I'd like to see some more about risk and opportunity, and it could be that these are subject to work that's coming downstream, but I would hope always to see risk and opportunity in a plan of this nature. And in terms of the general, specific outcomes, beyond any specific hard measurable things you want to deliver, I'd like to see if your guidance to us is, is this about protecting what we have, is it about improving the overall economic health of Waverley, or is it about promoting specific sectors? I'd like to see where you're going to help us get to on the back of this plan. So I'm sorry if that sounds critical, but as I say, I do business, or I have done business with Atkins in the past, and this is sort of normal meat and drink stuff that I would expect from Atkins. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards? Yours is fine? Yours? Councillor Mullner?
Thank you, Chairman. I have expressed my comments on this document in its previous form before, and I share many of the reservations. But equally, I do acknowledge and congratulate those who worked on it with their reception of the comments they've had, particularly at the workshop we held last month. I think the truth is, which is now recognised, is that a local authority is not best placed to do actions which can easily be termed as smart, and I think this document does the best it can. I think the actions which Waverley, like any other district council, can take is to monitor, support and communicate. That's what we have the staff who can do this, we have staff who can do this. The monitoring is obviously a passive function, but nonetheless, it's important that someone knows what is happening, and I was impressed by the amount of data that has been gathered. It's something I hope we would update over the years ahead. Support, things like wherever trading services and the Farnham Job Club, it's reasonably direct in terms of it is definitely a good thing and it helps employment. And the communication aspect is important too. I appreciate that the actions or the activities which are now listed in a far smaller number, seventeen is probably the maximum that we need, we can do work on them over the next year to make them somewhat tighter and therefore some, rather nearer the smart objective, which frankly I think is a pretty difficult task for any borough council to have as the shape of its activities. It's just very hard for us to do these things. We're not a business, we don't have financial objectives, and so to use the term smart is stretching it to its limits. The one thing I think we do have to do before this goes to the executive is to tighten up significantly pages seven to ten, which are, in my opinion, a very key part. I take it that we do want this document to be read to other people, and I think the message we put in those pages is very important indeed. And frankly, I agree with councillor Seaborn, they're not well-written enough, the purpose document, purpose page, page eight in particular. But, Chairman, with your indulgence, what I'd like to propose and see whether the committee agrees, is a very small task and finish group is set up to actually operate in the course of this week to give Kelvin and the others involved final suggestions for tighter wording, which I think will play much better with the various constituencies who will read this. I appreciate the time pressure that councillor Edwards and Kelvin Mills feel that they're under, and we're quite prepared to respond to that. And I think I have the very substantial help of councillor Seaborn in this, but there may be other members of the committee who want to get involved as well. But with that, councillor, Chairman, I will leave it there, but that is my proposal.
Councillor Edwards, yours.
Thank you, Chairman, yes. What we have to realise here is that we have a sea change, okay? Crater's review demanded that we have an economic strategy. Prior to that, it was very, very loose indeed, and it wasn't a priority for our council. We've come a long way. I take your point about finance and how we're going to ensure we have the necessary officer time to deliver some of the key issues in the document, but we've come a long way. Still a long way to go, we understand that, but this is a very worthwhile start, and I agree with councillor Manna, you know, if you have a small working group, that actions this week, particularly on page eight, that would be very helpful, and, you know, that's all I can say. With regard to the rest of questions, I hand over to Atkins on that.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. So we all made a note of those. I think the key point is the purpose of the action plan and to ensure, as has been picked up, they can be, the actions are as smart as possible, given the resources and ability of what the council can influence. And I think interesting three points there around the monitor, engage and support activities. Well, I think we've taken on board all of those points. Appreciate on the rural economy there. Obviously, that's a caveat of the national dataset in terms of how industries are classified, so we can present the data as is. I think perhaps that's worth then bringing out as a note, a point, bringing out more of that local knowledge, so we can try and reflect that, but I don't think that's, you know, we can take statistics as they are, we're not going to be able to reclassify, but I think bring that out as a note of the statistics, but actually, we know Waverley's, yeah, the rural economy in a bit more detail, so I appreciate that point, the statistics.
Yeah, so we can look, so basically, I've got the notes, hopefully they'll come through from Amy, and we can look to address that. If there is a task and finish group for this week, then we can get some dates and diary, we can get that finished off and done from there.
Needs to be fairly quickly.
Yes.
I think we appreciate that, councillor Edwards. I think councillor Mullner, do you want to say something?
Thank you, Chairman. I apologise for speaking out of turn, I thought we were all from the members of the committee allowed to speak in turn, but so apologise. First of all, on the economic threats on page twenty-four, I would like to just tell the committee roughly where I, as a historic environment champion, am standing at the moment, and also as a previous councillor for Dunsfold. On bullet point five, future population employment and the existing transport infrastructure, I am meeting with Jeremy Hunt and the managing director of Network Rail and the managing director of South Western Railways on the 9th of October in the House of Parliament to go through basically the train delivery that we have at the moment, because as councillor Ryan has already mentioned, a lot of the trains that leave Hasmer are already full, so the people who are waiting for their trains in Milford, Whitely, Farncombe, Godleming and in fact Guildford can't get on, can't get a seat, they're having to stand. So we're trying to sort that out. We're also increasing the infrastructure railway things, and I think a lot of you know that I've been involved in creating a new railway line between Cranley and Guildford, and we're looking at that. So that's what we're doing as far as the railway is concerned. As far as bullet point number six and seven are concerned, the declining mix of intermittent retailers, I'm talking to the Chinese cultural attaché and inviting him to come down to Waverley and have a look around. The wife of our MP, Mrs Lucia Hunt, has agreed to address them in Mandarin, so that they are fully conversant of what we can offer here in Waverley, and we have some marvellous buildings. This Lutons in Waverley is available to anybody who wants it, we're going to, if the Chinese want, we can produce this in Chinese. We have wonderful buildings, we have some wonderful Gertrude Jaqueline gardens, we have wonderful schools like Charterhouse that they can visit. We have a lot in this borough to encourage the Chinese to add to their tourism, the fact that they must come down. fact that they must come down to Waverley and spend money in our shops, go to our restaurants and improve the high streets that we are, you say, are now in decline. Hopefully, we can reverse that. So that's basically what I'm doing, and I hope that everybody takes notice. Thanks so much, Chairman.
Interesting. Unless somebody else wants to say anything, I want to ask the committee to support establishing a group that can get volunteers, if we're not asking for volunteers for membership, but I think mine do need to be available to meet this week to, as we do the task and finish group. Do we have that?
Yes, tabbed to set it.
Yeah, second up. Anybody willing to second that proposal? It's going to Seaborn, what's that? Vance, who's in favour of establishing?
Is this also volunteer? Okay.
Our volunteers, let's establish a group first, yeah? Yeah, I think. Who was that? Everybody?
That was one of them, councillor Adams.
Adams, okay. Upstate?
Sorry, Chairman.
Chairman, could I suggest it's probably unanimously agreed, but I mean, I'm afraid I haven't, I have not received the papers, so I'm afraid I haven't read them at all.
Well, yes, important, isn't it? Councillor Mulliner, councillor Seaborn, councillor Azier and, ooh, councillor Hess? Yes, fine. I'd love to join you, but I'm not really available this week, actually, today. I'll leave you, yes? Yes, yes? Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to re-emphasise that all the chambers of commerce from the four major connotations within our borough are fully supportive of this. They think it's a great idea, they've been waiting for it for years, okay? It is a live document, it is going to develop, and I'd just like to thank you for all your comments, and we'll try and include as much as we can in what you've said. But it will be reviewed in six months' time and then on an annual basis, but, you know, things will change. It's going to last 14, 15 years, so it will, when we finish with the document in 15 years' time, it will be considerably different to what we proposed today's, and I'd just like to thank you for all your comments.
Councillor Ryan?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Edwards. I just wanted to say that, in a way, this is such a big subject, as said before, it's very difficult to do, and this is a very perfunctory assessment of it. We're here for, well, we're almost pushing an hour, but an hour wouldn't be enough. I'm glad there are working parties set up, I'm sorry, I haven't volunteered to join, but I will input some information when I've read it. It's important, and I'm glad it's going to continue. And by the way, it does help if you can spell Haslemere correctly on your slides.
Thank you very much. Yes, I think we should not denigrate by any stretch of the amount of work that's already been put into this, actually, and all the work we've come, we've come a good way forward, I think, since the original draft, actually. So all we need to do is just push that final mile, I think, now, and all being well, that will be achievable. By the way, the executive committee is the 8th of October, I believe, but there you are, dailier, earlier, but there you are. Okay, right. We're on to the next item, another heavy item. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Right, another heavy item, item nine. I'd like to invite Katie Meakin to introduce this item, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So the HR strategy has been put together for the next five years in line with the same timescales as the corporate strategy, and it has been created on the basis of a number of points. These are, we have recently merged four or five departments together, so recruitment, payroll, learning and development and HR itself have all come together into one department. So we are going through quite a learning curve at the moment as to best practice and processes. So you will see in the strategy, it talks a lot about reviewing all of our processes, which we're calling our foundations, so almost kind of going back to scratch to make sure we have everything in place, and we're following best practice and we have the essential skills that we need across the team as well. We're looking a lot at making sure it's a very measurable and evidence-based strategy so that we can demonstrate what HR is bringing to the council, and looking at the reality of the changing workforce and the demographics that we have, and our medium-term financial plans. We're very keen to automate possibly all of our services if we can within HR. A lot of our work is documented all through paper at the moment, so we want to make our processes a lot quicker. We have brought Emily into our team, who's looking a lot more at our data, and I know you've seen some of the data that she created back in June, and also obviously talking a lot about what the rest of local government is doing and the wider workforce. A lot of the statistics that we have put together has forged the kind of priorities that we think we need to have. So we have 67% of our workforce is female, we have 36% of them work part-time, we have a particular aging workforce at the moment. The majority of our staff are actually leaving our employment in the first three years because they want better career opportunities. So it's some of those key demographics that we've really been looking at in terms of how we move everything forward. You'll see from the objectives that we've put in place, we also have an action plan for the next two years, and I think the document overall will change over the next, well, every year, I think, we will be reviewing it as to what our data is saying and what's happening within the wider network and the communities as well as to what we need to be focusing on. But at the moment, it's very much about the leadership that we have in place, the management development that we have, and working on how to make the workforce more changeable as well. So for this meeting, it was just to have any comments from anyone and any points that you were interested in discussing. Thank you.
Councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman. One of the things that I've noticed, and in fact, it's mentioned here on page 17 at the bottom, the staff turnover, is that a lot of youngsters are joining, particularly in the planning department, and then leaving within a year or two years. And I think to a certain extent it's probably due to bad morale. It's very depressing if you're a planning officer and you produce a document which requires the council to approve a particular plan, and then it goes to a committee which then throws it out, as you feel that you've done an awful lot of work for nothing. What I would like to propose, and I don't know whether we can slightly change it, is that there's more counteraction between councillors, the local people who live in the community and the planning officers before they actually produce all the documents and come to some conclusion as to whether a particular application should be agreed or declined. I think if we did that, we'd reduce the amount of work that we had to do in committees, we'd increase the morale of planning officers, and basically, overall, I think it would be a good idea. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As was mentioned, there is a small comment in here about changing roles, but what I would like to see in this strategy is a bit more of a vision as to how HR see the employment of Waverley changing. Obviously, technology is moving ahead quite quickly, and that will mean that there are going to be quite a few changes in various areas of the business. And I would have liked to see something in the report which recognises how Waverley is going to deal with that significant change.
Councillor Band?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I found this a very interesting report, and it certainly clearly sets out some of the challenges in front of us in HR terms. I think we always have to bear in mind that being a, bearing in mind where Waverley is located, with a lot of people working as closer into London than here, and with the relative size of the organisation, we are going to be a home for people transiting onto greater things. Somehow, we have to, in terms of recognising that, manage to find a way of hanging on to the brightest and the best, and I'm very pleased to see the issues of talent management and recognition and reward and learning and development all being addressed in the strategy. And I think this is particularly important, that people can actually see there is a career progression within Waverley. We have to start being able to promote people within the same organisation. Recently, it seems to me that a lot of, particularly our senior posts, have all been recruited from outside. Now, we've had one notable example in planning recently, which I think is particularly good news, that Beth has been promoted, but we need to be able, people, if people want to stay and take advantage of what we're offering, I do think, strongly feel, they need to see there is a potential career path within this organisation as an option to going outside. So I think we need to think up how we actually structure that. But I found a very interesting report, Chairman, and I, you know, I see a lot of sense of what is going into the action plan, but I do think we have to recognise the reality, A, where we are located, and B, the size of the organisation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, Chairman. I too thought it was an excellent report, I'm sure it can be added to in councillor Adams' point about how technology will perhaps influence how often people work at home, how many have to come into the office all the time. I think I've been told that only half the desks at Waverley are actually occupied at any given moment. I don't really recognise the concern that councillor Holder outlined. I've been involved in planning for a long time now, and I think the sad fact is that local authorities do act as a training ground, and bright young planning officers are very soon hired away by private consultancies who can offer considerably more money than we can, and yet we have made efforts to make the salary package more attractive. I don't think the issue of losing council decisions is a huge one. After all, 90% of all decisions are taken by officers anyway, and certainly in my time on Joint Planning Committee, the vast majority of recommendations are actually approved. And of course, not only has Beth Halloway Smith been recently promoted, but of course, Elizabeth Sims was an internal promotion to head of planning. So I think as far as we can, we do offer a career path, but we are quite a small and flat organisation. So I think we can offer a nice environment to work in, but we can't really cope with the facts of life, and certainly for the younger men looking to go forward to much better paid jobs. We're happy to have them for three, four, five years that they're here, and then wish them well when they go on, but we shouldn't perhaps grieve too much about it. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Ryan?
Thank you, Chairman. I had a degree of exposure to personnel, as we used to call it before dramatic letters HR were found. It's quite a skilled area, of course, and a very sensitive one, and I really don't have sufficient experience to comment on much of the speciality. I'm happy to leave it to the experts. For instance, I remember someone telling me that a 5% turnover of staff is actually not very good because you're getting stale, but a 25% turnover is not very good because too many are leaving. Experts can judge that. But I would like to support what councillor Manna just said, and indeed, I thought we had considered a short while ago that the establishment of better career paths for professional people like surveyors and so forth might be better met if we were to join up with other councils or former, an independent company that provided facilities, management services to councils. I think that has been done elsewhere. I think it's a way of reducing the apparent costs perhaps for us, but increasing the remuneration of the people who work there and certainly their career path. So perhaps I could ask that we don't forget about these opportunities, but otherwise, I'm happy to leave it to person, sorry, HR. Thank you.
Councillor Seaborn?
Thank you, Chairman. Like my colleagues, I'd like to congratulate Katie on a very solid and clear piece of work. Excellent. I had some questions which I was able to send to her in good time because it didn't take too long to read it, and I got very clear responses back, so that's excellence, that clarified a few things I didn't understand. There were two points that I thought were potentially omitted or needed developing, and I think somewhere in it, we need a very brief statement about equality and diversity. We have legal obligations in those areas, and, you know, we need to understand whether we, as a council, want to stop at just satisfying our legal obligations, or perhaps there's an opportunity to go further if we want to make a name for ourselves as, you know, supporting minority groups, handicapped, whatever, I don't know. I'm not putting forward an answer there, I think it's something that just needs to be very briefly addressed. And the other thing about it is it's rather a vanilla document in that it covers the whole picture, but actually, we have senior leaders, you know, Tom and the directors and the heads of service, and then we have managers, supervisors, and then we have technical and professional people, we have graduate trainees, we have support staff. They have slightly different needs, different career progressions, and I just wonder whether there's an opportunity to look at those different needs so that we are catering to make sure that those people that we desperately need to retain, and that's been alluded to by colleagues, you know, we need that career progression. It probably needs to be more specific for tailored groups rather than having a vanilla document, I would suggest. But thank you. Otherwise, you know, excellent, and it really fills me with a lot of warmth at the pace that I got very clear responses. Thank you.
Would you like to come back on the issues list?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you for all of your comments. I think if I come on to councillor Seaborn's first of all, so in terms of equality and diversity, I definitely agree. If we look across the council and at the things we currently do in that area, we have a number of quality impact assessments, we have equality objectives, we have equality policy as well, so all of those definitely need to be tied into the strategy and looked at that further. We are also part of what's called the Two Tick Scheme, which looks at how we do employ people with disabilities and how we're taking them through the recruitment process as well, so all of those can be tied in. In terms of managing the workforce, yes, I would agree, it doesn't kind of narrow down the different areas that we have within the teams, so I think those specifically need to be looked at as well. The other comments, in terms of people joining and leaving and the morale and the transition that we have of people obviously going to London and their development, I think there is a wider employment issue that everyone is tackling at the moment in terms of recruiting millennials, and people just naturally are leaving after two to three years. And I think people are all going through that transition where they think to stay maybe 10, 15, 20 years is really good, and that's what we're looking for, but actually, everyone in every sector at the moment is going through the challenge of people just naturally want to leave after two to three years. So it's a bigger context we need to look at, and yes, definitely with, in terms of our professionals here, what do we do for them and how do we do that? So I think the career pathways is something we can pick up in more depth. And I think Robin was going to comment on the committees as well in the planning side.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I mean, I think partly it's already been covered by other councillors' comments, but in terms of councillor Holder's points that you made there, councillor Holder, around, you know, what work goes into reviewing planning applications before they get to committee, I think mainly I can provide a point of reassurance that a lot of the things that you were mentioning there do happen prior to the application coming to the committee, as well as looking at the details of it in respect of, you know, planning matters. The officers do speak to the relevant councillors, they do obviously make arrangements for members of the community either to show their support or to show, you know, to put their objections forward, and all of that is taken into account by councillors before they make the decision. So you're quite right in what you say, but I would perhaps think that mainly that's already covered by our committee processes, but I'm happy to hear any views to the contrary.
Of course, I would remind you that we've had a peer review, which we were in a report of, aren't we, so we should take that into account as well. Anybody else want to speak on this item? Right. The recommendation is that the value for money and customer service, or an S committee, considers, we've considered the strategy and passes any comments we've done and observations to the executive. So I presume that's, anybody? So I presume that's, anybody? I was just intending to write the words to say, is it agreed? Thank you very much. Moving on, the annual scrutiny report two thousand and seventeen to eighteen. I will invite Yasmin Maiken, who was missed off the introduction list at the beginning, but to comment on this, please.
Thank you, Chair. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm the scrutiny officer, Yasmin Maiken. So some of the members of the committee will remember that Waverley undertook a review of the ONS arrangements in two thousand and sixteen, which resulted in fundamental changes to the way Waverley does scrutiny. This report, the one in front of you, reflects on the first year of the new arrangements, including the successes of the new process and the improvements still to be made. I'd like to thank the councillors who were able to complete the survey either in two thousand and sixteen or the most recent version, which took place in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, and inform this report. I'd like to emphasise that I always welcome feedback from members, so if any members of the committee were unable to complete the survey for whatever reason, you have not missed your chance to contribute, email me or catch me off the meeting or give me a call. This report observes a lot of the successes of the past year, but it also highlights areas in which ONS could do better. Publicity and public engagement, one of the main, were the main areas identified for improvement, as well as involving external partners. And as we continue to embed the new process, these will be two main areas of focus. As the first report since the new arrangements, I invite the committee to comment on the report, particularly its format and layout, and to reflect on the past year of their time on overview and scrutiny. So I welcome any questions or comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, members. Questions? Comments? Commissioner Ramsay.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I think it's a very fair report, it's a very fair reflection of what's gone on in the last year, and a particular thank you to Yasmin for all the work, hard work that she's put in. And I know she is, as far as the work that I've been involved in, she's been an absolute superstar in gathering our random thoughts and pulling them together in a logical fashion and making a sensible report out of them. So thank you on a personal basis very much for doing that. I think the test is going to be in the coming year. All the ONSs have produced detailed studies with recommendations which by and large have all, but without exception, been accepted by the executive. I think what we, from my perspective, are now waiting to see is to how those activities accepted by the executive are going to be discharged and what comes out of them. So I think in the next nine months, Chairman, we have an interesting task in seeing what is being delivered from the reports which we have actually produced, and to, I think the judgement next year will be more fundamental into how successful the ONS's scrutiny operation has been. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Sorry. It is recommended that the overview and scrutiny committees endorse the annual scrutiny report and agree any observations or recommendations they wish to make to the executive. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Well, okay. We go on to the next item, corporate performance report quarter one, and in fact, I'd like to invite the chief executive, Tom Horwood, to present this.
Chairman, thank you very much. I'm very pleased to bring to councillors' attention the quarterly performance report in the new format. So this format has been developed in collaboration with senior managers across the organisation as well as with the scrutiny chairs, and so you'll see it's a little bit different to what you've been used to in the past. So previously, you'd very much focused your quarterly discussions on key performance indicators in the services within your remit. This report is now one composite report that goes to all four committees. It includes that information, perhaps in a slightly different and more visual format, but it also encompasses other areas of performance, including our service business plans, financial performance, workforce data, and all of the other things that you can see in it. So hopefully, it gives more of a rounded picture of the council's progress. There's also increased narrative to help really understand the things that are going on within the services and across the council, focusing obviously on describing the last three months, but also outlining areas that are of concern. So things that we're pleased with, things that we're less pleased with, things that are keeping us awake at night, those are the sorts of content that hopefully we will be able to read about and discuss. So in that sense, it's more obvious and transparent for you and indeed for the public to see how we're doing. Clearly, it's new, so there are already some further improvements in terms of format and layout that we can incorporate. We've already had some feedback on that, so it's a little bit of a work in progress, and we'll see some further tweaks at quarter two. I think in terms of content, you'll see that performance across the organisation is good overall, and there's further detail within the report on the services, in particular those that are under your remit, customer and corporate services, finance, policy and governance, and relevant managers are here to help with any detailed points you have on those as well. So thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Members? Commissioner Mulliner?
If I'd like to say that I think this is an excellent move. Yes, one or two more details could be put in, but it's, there's a wealth of information here, and it'll probably take us a meeting or two to get thoroughly used to it. But the rag approach is certainly useful, and I was relieved to find out when I looked at what the details were, they were things which had been mentioned before, such as complaints and invoices, which, while important, are things which are being addressed and probably have been addressed by now. I think a comment I'll take offline with you, Tom, is that I'd like to see the finance element slightly differently presented, but I'm delighted to see it in there because I think it's something which all the committees should have an eye on throughout the year. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'd echo councillor Mulliner's comment. I think it's really good. It's complex, it's going to take a little while to get used to, but that's fine, you know, we need to be trained and learn how to use it. I just got one, a comment, I guess, that I'd like to address to Graham Clark, and that's the finance update. You know, with my audit hat on, I'm absolutely stunned that we get figures for a quarter where you're spending over half a million pounds and there's absolutely no variance, which seems to be the norm. We're getting exactly the outturn that the approved budget is set at, and that just, you know, with such large numbers, you'd expect to be a few bob out at the end of the day. Are we getting numbers lifted, you know, are these really accurate numbers or are they close estimates? Because it just seems too perfect. Sorry. Thank you.
I think, I felt the same way. I thought it was remarkable budgeting.
This, and the reason is that numbers can sometimes disguise something, and the trouble with finances, there's twenty-eight million going in and out for housing benefits, and it really shouldn't be there. If there's one thing with my budget strategy hat on, I have grown to sigh over is when we see numbers which are inflated by what I call flow-through items. We collect an awful lot of money, but most of it we have to pass on to other people. And in future, if we could have these numbers presented with the stuff which is strictly, if you like, within our control, that would reduce the size of the numbers and make any variances somewhat more meaningful, although I still think that a full-year variance of two, whether you're talking about thirty-three million or twenty-eight billion, is still pretty impressive, but I'm sure you could explain. Thank you very much.
Can I ask Graham to comment on that?
Yep, of course, Chairman, yes. So this is a sort of a headline analysis based on meetings that the finance team have had with the budget managers and heads of service, and these are projected full-year outturns based on what we know at this point in time. And what we found from the first trawl through at the end of the first quarter has been that, other than the variances here, the budget managers are reassuring the finance team that there's nothing that is going to blow them off course materially by the end of the year. Now, quite separately from this headline analysis, there's a lot of detailed work that goes on, and I keep an overview on the big contract costs, the pay budget, which is fifteen or so million, and all the key income areas as well. So I completely take the point around stripping out the benefits and any other sort of big flows that are in and out because it distorts the picture, and we'll do that next time. But overall, I've been assured by the work that I've, that the team have done, that at the moment, we are not anticipating deviating from our budget to any material extent at the year end.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I, for one, liked the new format and found it easy to read through. If I've got any comment at all, I would like to see a little bit more explanation as to what corrective action is being taken where there's a red traffic light, but that would be my only detailed comment. I think in terms of my past experience of having been the finance portfolio for six years, I know some while back now, I'd expect to see, wouldn't expect to see too much variance at the end of the first quarter. I might be suspicious if I saw the same numbers turning up by the end of the second or third quarter. I've been inclined to challenge one or two, but I think what Graham has explained is probably exactly right.
Commissioner Holder?
Thank you, Chairman. Rather like the government preparing for a no-deal Brexit, I was just wondering whether the chief executive has possibly looked at the possible demise of Surrey County Council and the fact that the council, the county will be broken up into four unitary authorities. If that is the case, you know, perhaps we should make preliminary plans for that eventuality. Thank you, Chair. My immediate response is to say, oh, gosh, is this the deal that was struck at number ten when Surrey wanted to have a referendum? How interesting. I just wanted to say I love the pictures and everything. It's very good. And having struggled frequently with Word and Excel, I just hope the system for producing this will settle down so it doesn't take too many staff just to produce the figures. Thanks, it's good.
Anybody else wish to comment? Can we move on to the recommendation? It is recommended that the overview and scrutiny committee considers the performance of the service areas under the remit of the committee as stated in Act One to this report and makes any recommendations to senior management are the executive as appropriate. Is that agreed? Honours be gall. Item twelve, Treasury Management Framework Capital Strategy. Can I ask Graham Clark to introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, every February, well, every January, actually, this committee consider a suite of Treasury policy framework documents covering a range of things such as treasury investments, property investments and borrowing and banking arrangements, and the committee look at those ahead of the executive and council in February approving them. The government, in conjunction with SITFA, changed the guidance in March and introduced a new requirement to have a capital strategy as part of that overall suite of Treasury policy frameworks. So, and they said that we needed to put that in, obviously that missed the boat for the February meeting, said that we needed to get that approved at the earliest opportunity in this year, and in future years, this will be a document that comes alongside all those other documents to this committee in January, head of the council in February. Now, what's actually happened is, because this document covers the way that capital proposals are pulled together and monitored, of course, this committee some time ago initiated a really detailed piece of work with a subgroup led by councillor Band and supported by Yasmin that did some excellent work looking at exactly these things. So the committee were ahead of the government in doing this piece of work, and the government have just sort of now mandated it. So hopefully, there's no surprises in the document. The finance team have just tried to pull together from the statutory guidance what the position is at Waverley and weave into that the work that the ONS committee did. So there shouldn't be anything in here that's new to the committee. In fact, the piece of work that the committee did was much more comprehensive than we're required to put into this strategy. So we'll certainly do, you know, in isolation, actually, this document isn't ideal, it would be much better alongside other Treasury documents, and that's certainly what will happen in future. But we do need to just get this through to council now, and then, as I say, in January, we'll bring it alongside the other framework documents. But happy to hear members' thoughts and views at this stage, Chairman, and we'll take those on board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thoughts and views? Commissioner Band?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I understand the necessity to have such a strategy document, but my concern is, is the way it is worded at the moment indicates that all, everything, and our house is lovely, and if you look at in particular on page ninety-nine on the paragraph two-point-two, project initiation, if you go through pretty well every paragraph there, those are things which the scrutiny review picked up, which we weren't doing satisfactorily. So it's very much showing an ideal world at the moment, this document, at which I don't think many of us round this side of the House have any great confidence in what we're actually doing to the degree that it's actually been proposed here. And I alluded it to in my comments at an earlier point when I'm talking about what actions are coming out of the reports which this group has prepared and accepted by the executive for further action. So I can appreciate the importance of it coming forward to meet our obligations, but I am concerned that we should see soon, you know, what has been actually done to respond, to reflect the nineteen points which came out of the scrutiny's report, which were in their entirety accepted by the executive. Because if you go through literally each paragraph, I mean, I can take any one you like, I mean, proposal, second paragraph, proposals are given independent oversight and review of the project in terms of validation arrangements, da-da-da-da-da. Well, I think our experience in looking at what's been going on would challenge that. The penultimate paragraph talks about officer resource being assessed when considering a project. Well, I think, again, our review would challenge that that was being adequately done, and we saw time and time again a conflict in resources and projects under-resourced. So, yes, I see we have to draft it like this, because we'd be in trouble if we didn't, but I do think there's a health warning to actually being able to put into practice what is being set out here. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman. I really had a question to Graham Clark. I mean, I take entirely what councillor Band has said, and I was wondering whether caveated words such as capital projects are intended to be subject, proposals are intended to be given independent oversight. If you want a statement, a strategy that is true, that would seem to be a more honest statement of where we are now, and perhaps in a year's time or two, we'll be able to use the uncaveated language. And should there be a reference to this to the report of the group that you chaired, just to show that we are looking at things as they are now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, following on from the discussion that councillor Band has started, this is a strategy, not a report, so it's, I think the language is not quite right, and I think councillor Mulliner has pointed that out. I think if, instead of being in the present tense, it was drafted in the future tense, so it is what we are going to do, which is solve all the points that we addressed, then that would be entirely appropriate for a strategy, but it reads like it's a report and we're not there at the moment. So I think this is probably easily addressed by changing ours to wills, and then it will be a laudable intent, and we hope that'll be the way it is in a year's time. Thank you.
First, can I ask Yasmin, if she wants to comment first, and then Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a minor point. So we've come, we might come to it in our work programme item later on this evening, but an update is due to come to this committee regarding those nineteen recommendations from the report, the Capex manager, process and management report that this committee's commissioned. I can't promise the outcomes of that and the actions that have been taken, but just to say that it is on its way and it will be coming to this committee in the near future.
Graham Clark?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, very fair comment.
Yeah, very fair comment about this. This is a sort of an aspiration and we're not there yet. We've still got to do some work corporately, so between the finance team and the spending officers. And I think the suggestions to tweak the wording in the strategy, but also, can I suggest, Chairman, that I sort of strengthen the covering report and incorporate the references to the piece of work that Yasmin's just referred to members have? And also perhaps give a view on where we are and what we've still got to do in the covering report rather than in the strategy. And then that's what will go after the executive and then on to council. And then hopefully that will address the points that members have made.
councillor Irons.
Thank you. Actually, it does use the future tense a bit at the beginning. I don't think it's bad at all. I think I quite like it, I like the way it's presented, but may I make a plea for us to standardise on dates? The front page has the date 8/17. There aren't 17 months in the year. You know, whenever one refers to 9/11 in the news, I have to think hard, it's not September 11th, is it? Or whichever way around it is, it's the 9th. Anyway, I was getting it the wrong way around. The best way to exhibit dates is what I believe is the NATO standard, which is day-day, three-letter abbreviation of a month and then the year, so it's plain. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Any more?
I wasn't completely clear. If one looks at 2.3, the future tense is used. Were you agreeing, Graham, that if we just change all the Rs to will-be's, that'll meet it? Good, thank you very much.
Thank you for that clarification. Well...
Excuse me, Chairman. I mean, I think we need to go more than just 2.3. I mean, I think we have to go back to...
We're looking at the whole document, aren't we?
Okay. Well, as long as we take, I understood that councillor Mulliner was just suggesting changing the will into 2.3, but it has to be reflected in the whole document, I think.
I think we're looking at the whole document really, aren't we?
Perhaps there should be something at the beginning that says, this presents an ideal world, it is not necessarily what we achieve. Because that's what we're arguing about, isn't it? What's here is good, it may not be what we actually do. Sorry, we're going to get better.
Chairman, I can review the whole document in the light of the discussion at the committee tonight and perhaps work with Amy and Yasmin just to ensure that we've sort of caught the sentiment and then reflect that in the covering report that goes off to the executive as well.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I think it was 2.2 which most clearly showed the point councillor Band was making, except there could be other parts of the report which would need the same treatment.
Okay, can we now move to the recommendation, please? So it enjoys today that the proposed amended capital strategy is recommended to the council for approval. Move on. Item 13, Budget Shortfall Commitments Progress. Again, Mr Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. There's no report for this one. This is referring back to the January budget report where members agreed a package of measures in the approved budget for 1819 to address the budget shortfall. And I think the committee asked for an update on how we're doing against those. So just a very quick run-through, and there was a target for a procurement saving of £40,000. That is on target. We've made savings in postage, mobile phone contracts, et cetera. So we're halfway towards achieving that, at the halfway point. So I'm confident that we will achieve that savings target. Property income, there was a figure of £250,000 put into the budget. With the acquisitions that the council made at Waycourt in Farnham and with the recent rent reviews on two properties that Waverley already held, I'm confident that we will achieve that target within our current year's budget by the year end. And then there are a range of other costs and income measures, sorry, cost-saving and income measures that were fairly minor, that the council agreed. They've all been reviewed and they are on target to be achieved as well.
Thank you very much. Budget Strategy Working Group, Professor Ford, councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the paper is in front of you and I will not add to it, but very happily answer questions. Essentially, we have completed Workstream 1 and we're about to get on with Workstream 2 and there'll be three more to come. I hope what you read gives you confidence that we're taking a sensible approach and that you approve of the approach we're taking in the future. Thank you.
Questions? Comments? councillor Adams.
Yes, I've made a note here, I'm not sure which paragraph it applies to, but I've just got new sources of income, question mark, because we talk quite a lot about what's going on at the moment, but have we considered, you know, new activities that the council could undertake?
Thank you, Chairman. We haven't yet, no. We have other workstreams where that can certainly play its part. Now, we've looked at what the current work income streams are and what we think will happen to them.
Anybody else wish to ask any questions, comments? No? On to the recommendation. The recommendation being for the value for money and customer service ONS committee to endorse, one, the progress made so far by the Budget Strategy Working Group, and, two, the suggested approach to Workstream 2. Is that agreed? Item 15, Committee Work Programme. Yasmin, could you please introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Chairman. So this is the usual item at the end of every agenda. It's got on page 110 on my iPad, I think it's the same in your papers. The agenda for today's meeting, you'll see September in the fourth column. After that, we've got, so on page 111, we've got items due to come in November. So as we were discussing in the pre-meeting, it could be that those three items done thoroughly are enough for one committee meeting. We'll welcome any suggestions of additional items. Following the discussion this evening, it might be that the progress of capital expenditure process and management review outcomes could be brought forward to November. It depends how the committee feels on that one, I'd take your advice. Always welcome, I always welcome suggestions from councillors on future items. But that's it from me really, Chairman, it's just to draw attention to those for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think this is a document we very look forward to actually, my... Any comments, councillors? Can we move forward to the recommendation, please? That members are invited to consider their work programme and make any comments and amendments they consider necessary, including suggestions for any additional topics that the committee may wish to add to its work programme. Agreed? Thank you very much. We come to exclusion of the press and public and, pursuant to procedure rule 20 and in clause restriction 108, subsection 4 of the Local Government Act 1972, the press and public be excluded from the meeting during consideration of the following items on the grounds that it is likely, in view of the nature of the business to be transacted, or the nature of proceedings, that if members of the public were present during these items, there'd be disclosure to them of exempt information as defined by section 100 of the Act, and the description specified in the appropriate paragraphs of the revised Part One of Schedule 12A to the Act to be specified at the meeting.